Good evening, welcome to the November twenty four, uh, excuse me, what month am I in? Welcome to the October 2014 meeting of the Hamlet Council. We're glad to see everyone here. Uh, first item of business tonight is invocation, and we'll ask Councilman Lewis if he would give us invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious and kind, loving God, we thank you for the day that you've given us. Thank you for this opportunity to conduct the business for the city of Hamlet. We would ask for your guidance, direction, and help in all the matters that come before us tonight. And Lord, we would ask that you would help us to do what's pleasing unto you in your sight, Lord. And Lord, we know that each one is here. We would ask that you would watch over each family that's represented, watch over our department heads, the police department, fire department, keep each one of them safe. Public work. And Lord, we thank you for all the hard work that our administration has done, and everything that they have done in this time that's been, um, hard to get through, and the things that we've had to face. And Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting, as we give you the praise, honor, and glory for all things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. At this time, gentlemen, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with changes.
Yes, sir. Mayor would like to strike, uh, number eight on the agenda. And, uh, we're gonna move this, look into it, and have it in November's meeting.
Item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, we're gonna also table this. Need to have our fire chief take a look at some of these things before we discuss them. That's the, uh, regarding a change to the Hamlet's fire district. We're gonna table that until, uh, again, November's meeting, when the fire chief has a chance to take a look at that. Other than that, I don't see anything else change, uh, needs changing.
Are, are we gonna take that off the agenda, this number sixteen? I thought we were still gonna talk about that and just not make any action. What, what do we need to do with that, Chief?
He had to...
It's pretty detailed.
It's up to y'all, if you want to discuss it, that's, that's fine.
Think you'll have enough time at the next meeting? What you wanna do?
Let's just do it.
Yeah, how much information do you have tonight that would kind of...
I just hate for us to get to November and too much information to take in then.
Alright, we'll leave it on, we'll, we'll leave it on there?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so, uh, make a motion, we're gonna remove item number eight on the agenda. We're gonna keep sixteen, uh, open for, uh, discussion. If nothing else, I don't see anything, Mayor. That's a motion to go ahead and adopt that.
I have a motion, I need a second.
A second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, item number, on item number four, uh, our sitting clerk slash interim manager has been so busy this past month, she has not had an opportunity to get last month's minutes completed, so we will pa, go on past that item at this time. At this time, we'll get to item number five, which is comments from attendees, and this is a section where you can get up and give us any kind of comments that are not related to any other item that's on the agenda at this time. And, uh, certainly, your comments are welcome. If you've got problems, issues that are not on here, we'd like to hear about it. I believe we have a gentleman by the name of Mr. Mumford tonight that would like to address counsel. If you would, come up, sir.
I've got a problem with the, uh, interim police chief and Captain James Waters.
Raise that mic up, just a little bit, sir, we can't hear, there you go, try that.
The problem I have is, um, police came to my house June the 12th and June the 19th. I went to Police Tucker, left him a letter, and, uh, young lady on the desk signed for After about a week, I didn't hear nothing, I sent him a certified letter, I think on June the 21st. For three months, I never heard a thing from him. So I finally went to the interim city manager and told her my problem, so she told me if he, she would talk with him, and if, uh, if he didn't give me the information, she would get it for me. He came up with the information that I said I wanted, but he did not give me the information that I said I wanted.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. The last part.
The information I wanted, he said he gave it to me here on this disc here. The information I wanted is not on this disc. And the information I wanted was, on June the 12th, I asked him for all radio transmissions from the time the police got to my house until the time the police left. I also asked him for the same information on June the 19th. The reason why I said he didn't give it to me... On June the 12th, the arrival time at my house was eleven hours and fifty-eight minutes. The completed time was twelve hours and thirteen minutes. That's saying they was at my house for fifteen minutes. The recorded radio transmission he gave me was only one minute and fifty-five seconds. On June the 19th, the arrival time at my house was nineteen hundred and forty-five minutes. Time completed was 2014. That's twenty-nine minutes the police was at my house. The recording police che, uh, chief gave me was only two minutes and fifty-five sec, I mean, two minutes and fifteen seconds. There was a lot of information between that time that he did not give me. And the information I wanted, I wanted it somewhere for a court case I had in, uh, August the 29th. And the rest of the information I wanted was, uh, to prove that possibility that Captain Waters had lied to a magistrate in Rockingham. And this is why I'm here today. On, uh, 6:10 and about 12:00 PM, I called the Hamlet Police, I mean, 6:12. About 12:00 PM, I called the Hamlet Police to come to my house because my neighbor Michael Washington had assaulted me. I needed a copy of all the recorded conversation of the Hamlet Police, myself and Michael Washington, starting at the time the Hamlet Police arrived until the time they left. On 6:19 and about seven o'clock PM, I called the Hamlet Police to come to my house because my neighbor Michael Washington and Mary Barbara Washington pulled up corner stakes to a survey I had on 6:17:14. I need a copy of all the recorded conversation of the Hamlet Police, myself, Mary Washington, starting at the time the police arrived until the time they left.
Mr. Mumford, I believe that, uh, Ms. Kirkley has a answer to your, as to what was done by the city to answer to you, and I would ask her at this time to explain to us what she did to help you here and what she gave you, but it's my understanding that we have given you everything that we had available to the city at that time.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah.
Mr. Mumford, you said that you wanted a recording of the broadcast, and you mentioned the times. I don't think our officers' conversations are recorded when they're on scene.
No, they're not.
We don't have body mics on our officers, do we? So what you asked for and what you got would be different, because what you asked for was the recorded conversations. That's gonna be telephone communications on 911, and that's gonna be only radio traffic on 911. So that's what you got. The difference in time is, is different.
It's, it's according to my understanding that the Hamlet Police have a recording running 24 hours a day.
That's, that's on our phones here at the, at City Hall.
So what now?
That's, that's on our phones here at City Hall. That's not in our cars or on the officers.
So if you called up here thinking you were gonna get a, a complete synopsis of what happened on scene, that's just not gonna happen.
I'm not, I'm not asking what was on the scene. I'm asking for all recordings from the time they arrived at the house until the time they left.
All they would've had is just when they checked out there and when they left.
But there's no recording, is what I'm telling you.
There's no what?
Those recordings would only be privileged through a body microphone on the officers or a camera in the car.
We don't have that.
And, and that is basically for traffic stops and things like that.
I'm not, I'm not asking for, the only thing I'm asking for is all recording from the time they arrived at the house until the time they left.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to explain is, there's nothing, there's nothing that's recording.
Right. Hold up a minute, let Ms. Kirkley explain.
Uh, Mr. Tucker's captain, I mean, Chief Tucker said that he provided everything that he had. He even went to, um, 911 Office to obtain those CDs that we provided to you, and he said that he simply didn't have anything else to give to you.
Well, this is not the first time I've done this. Um, I applied for radio transmission before.
I, I think, um, did they use to, does anyone know, any of the police officers, did they use to a long time ago? Did we have access to...
We had, we had cameras in some cars at one time, I remember.
Right. I think at one point we did, but we don't.
They're activated with blue lights.
But we don't have that anymore.
In other words, when you get pulled by an officer and the blue lights turn on, it turns on the recording device.
Well, my question would be, like I said, is, uh, they came to the house and left for twenty-nine minutes, and the only recording I have of other officers' transmissions is only two hours, I mean, two minutes and fifteen seconds.
Okay. But that, that would've just been them checking in on the radio.
That's just gonna be them dispatchers calling them, and then them responding back.
And you're saying that there are no recordings that record police 24 hours a day?
No, sir.
That technology is available, that technology is very expensive, and the city of Hamlet does not have that technology. You have everything you requested. I mean, there's nothing else we can say. You've got everything that you requested.
Well, my complaint is with Captain Waters is, he witnessed my neighbor pulling up my stakes. He told the magistrate in Rockingham that he did not witness that. Uh, Magistrate James Herron called him, and Mr. Herron said Mr. Waters told him that he did not witness them pulling up my stakes. Now, either Mr. Herron lied and pretended he called Mr. Waters...
Hold on, Mr. Mumford, I don't allow personal attacks in here, okay? That's the first thing. If you've got a complaint, hold it. If you've got a complaint against the captain over here, please take it up with our city man, our new city manager, okay? And file a complaint, it will be investigated.
Well, like I said, this is, this is not a personal attack.
But we're not calling people liars in here, okay?
It, it's just, it's just either the truth, either Waters told him he didn't witness it, or either Herron pretended he called Waters.
Well, that's between you and Mr. Herron and Captain Waters, and seriously, if you have a complaint with, with Captain Waters, you do need to file a complaint with the city manager, and it will be investigated.
Well, I can, I can do that.
Okay, well, you'll have to come in the office and do it.
That, that'll be fine with me, just as long as it's investig, I don't, I don't, you know, you like to respect the police officers here in Hamlet, but when you know that they have lied to...
Now, I've told you, don't be starting something, okay? That's enough. You've said enough, okay? Go ahead and sit down. We appreciate you coming in, and we've heard your story, and we've told you what we can do and what we can't do, but let's, don't be attacking anybody, whether it's another citizen or one of our police officers or any other employee. We do have a process for taking care of that. If you'll please come in and file a complaint.
Alright, I'll file, I'll file the, uh, complaint with the city manager.
Very good.
Hopefully, just see what, uh, just what happened to...
But you do understand that the radio stuff that you would like to have, we just don't have any of that.
I do not understand that.
Okay, well, I don't know, I don't know how to explain it to you.
Because it seemed like to me some device, any time a officer come on the radio, something is recorded.
Yeah, when he comes on, he hits a button and talks, and then he releases it. That's talking to the dispatcher.
That's right. He just said, "I'm there, or I left the scene," or whatever, but that's it.
That's all he says.
There's nothing in between.
He don't hold the button down the whole time he's at the property.
Well, I have recordings that, uh, says different, and, but if y'all say, uh...
You, you have older recordings?
Yes, I do.
Is that what you mean? I think that was during a different time period, maybe when we had other...
That when a police officer is talking to you, you could, you are also being recorded.
We don't have any of that now, so I don't know. But, uh, we appreciate hearing what you had to say, but please, if you have a complaint, file it, okay?
Well, I thank you for hearing it, and, um, I'll take it up with the city manager.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else tonight that has, uh, any comments they'd like to make before the council regarding anything that's not on the agenda for tonight? If not, we'll proceed on, and, uh, at this time, we'll ask, uh, Chief Knight to introduce his new paramedic firefighter.
Hey, you're gonna need to go to the post.
Yeah, uh, we don't, he's not here. Uh, it is, it is Roger Stewart, right? Okay, it is Roger Stewart, though, correct? If you'd like to meet him, please go by the fire station and acquaint yourself with him.
He'll be here next month, hopefully.
Okay. And, uh, let's see, uh, Captain Waters, I believe you've got a police officer tonight.
Mayor, council, and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Tonight, I want to recognize an officer that we had on the force before about 11 years, Sergeant Josh Glenn. Can you please join me? He was recently awarded the Advanced Lawman Certificate, and that's the highest level of law enforcement certificate issued by the Criminal Justice Training Standard and Education Commission, and it's based on your years of service, uh, your education, and your training. And tonight, I'd like to pin this on Sergeant Glenn, if I may.
Very good. Not through the vest, anyway.
I just wanted to add that, uh, you know, Josh joined the force January 25th, 2004. He served as our sergeant of the Governor Highway Safety Program. Our sergeant as a canine officer, his canine was Casey. Um, Josh is dedicated, and he's a loyal officer to the city of Hamlet. He's also volunteered with Chief Knight, Hamlet Fire Rescue, as a firefighter and a medical responder, and y'all did the applause I wanted you to do. That was my nose there, but I like just thanking for his dedication service, and, uh, God bless and keep you safe.
Thank you, y'all. I want to say that that is a, that is a significant achievement. Uh, several of us here have been privileged to have received the advanced certificate, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of time to get it, so, uh, thank you so much, Josh. We appreciate it.
I don't wanna call you out, but congratulations on that, that's, you know...
Josh, congratulations.
Absolutely.
Over the last, uh, several months, we have run into an issue regarding the canine officers and the amount of time that they have to spend with their, uh, dogs, and, uh, in consideration of that, we have come up with a, uh, settlement with them to pay them for the time that they were having to take care of these dogs off duty. And, uh, what we need tonight, they have, the officers have signed the agreement, and what we need tonight is for the, uh, council to approve it.
Uh, yes, sir. I would like to make a motion, um, that we approve the settlement with the two canine officers, and that would be Josh Glenn in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Also Stephen Williams in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, this come to our attention, like the mayor said, several months ago. Um, there was a situation in which there were supposed to be comp time taken off while they were working. Um, previous city manager instructed the previous police chief that that needed to end, even though the policy was there to do it. Policy wasn't changed or amended. Therefore, um, this compensation is a result of them not being compensated for their time over the course of, Tammy, what was it, three years?
Several years.
Three years. Um, and this brings us in good standing with both officers. Also, I would like to extend to both Josh Glenn and Stephen Williams my apologies for this occurring and this money, um, taking so long to get to where it needed to be. But I would like to make that motion now.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh-huh.
Pardon?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Two opposed, or it's three and two?
You didn't give us a chance to make explanation.
Oh, okay, well, I will give you a chance.
Well...
Please go ahead.
I, I agree with part of what Council McQueen has said, in that there was an issue that these, these, uh, these guys were, uh, instructed, they couldn't claim it anymore. Um, but I, I, the full amount that we decided to pay, uh, our, our city attorney had recommended offering half, and we went ahead and paid the full amount, uh, at a previous session, and the council, majority of the council moved to pay the entire amount. I'm not saying we don't take some blame on this, okay? Uh, some miscommunications on claiming comp time and things like that. Uh, but I asked for and never received any training records on these dogs. We've had dogs for about seven or eight years, and there's no training records, there's no, there's no, uh, uh, call-outs records, there's no logs, there's no nothing to show that we even had dogs, other than the physical appearance of the dog being with the department. That being said, again, these guys didn't get what they were supposed to get there for approximately three years, I believe, is that right, Tammy? Um, and part of it's that the, there was no paperwork for where they filed for their comp time or place, because our policy clearly said that you're supposed to submit, you know, your, your hours per day, uh, so, um, dally that they didn't do that. We didn't make it clear to them to do that and pay, and, and, and award them or give them the hours. So my feelings is that we should've met in the middle at fifteen thousand dollars in lieu of thirty thousand dollar payment here. Um, I just don't know where we're gonna keep getting this money from. This is not all the city's fault. Uh, it's been brought up at least four times on that communication. You said that the previous city manager did this. I think the chief tried to clarify with, with you and, and this council that she said that they gotta start taking time off, not taking, not take no more comp time, or receive or claim no more comp time. That's, but we didn't do an investigation into that, we just decided to pay the full amount. Um, I just don't understand where we're gonna keep getting money from to pay these, these things, but when it comes to other issues that we've got facing us, you know, we, we fight paying it, we fight everything when it comes to, uh, like the issue with, with we've got with the cars and the things like that, that's been put on the back burner. This right here was paid in full. So yes, I've got a problem with it. I'm not saying we're not to blame to a certain extent, but the full amount, it, it just bothers me that we didn't do a further investigation into that. Um, and why didn't the one employee that's still here, why didn't he get, why didn't he get sent home to burn his comp time versus paying cash? Why didn't we do that? Why didn't he go home and start burning some comp time? I mean, that was, that's an option if we owe him comp time, but we gave cash, the full amount. But it just seemed we were very eager to pay thirty thousand dollars out. I'm not discrediting them that they had dogs, however, I hadn't seen training records, and I've asked for deployment records where the dogs were used, and I hadn't seen anything. They were lost. And where's your credibility when you don't have your records where your dog was trained? Okay?
Wait a minute, Mr. Lewis, did you have a comment?
I just agree with Pat. It was just a cloudy issue all the way around, and I didn't agree with the amount either. Uh, you know, I felt like we should go with our attorney, and sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, so it is what it is. I felt like it could've been handled in a little different manner. I'm like Pat, I don't think we were, we were to blame, but the officers had a responsibility also.
Let me ask you this. How did we arrive at this figure? It's my understanding that this figure was arrived by the city manager, interim city manager, with the finance director, that they came up with this figure as what the city owed these officers. It's nothing that we said, it's not, it's not, nothing that we said they owed. This is what the city says.
Based on what they were told.
And if they owe it, pay it.
Tammy, did the city do due diligence in researching the amount of hours that was done? I'll go on records and, and record and say I do not agree with what Mr. Pressler said. He's requesting training records. However, the training records and the training for the dog is not what was in question. What was in question was the hour that they were supposed to get by city policy to take care of the dogs at home. Up until three years ago, they were told to take that time as comp time. They were then told not to take the time as comp time. They're two different issues there.
And policies are changed by city council?
Policies are changed by city council, not staff. I'll go on record to say, I'm not gonna make an offer to settle a, a situation that the city needs to settle for less than what these guys were due. Now, we were, you know, if you wanted to do half, what makes you think that, that half is, is what needed to be paid? These guys were due this money, and I just think, I just thank goodness we didn't get sued as a result of this, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, uh, Pat, for not getting your comment.
That's fine.
And I was misunderstanding there about...
To make it clear with what y'all were told to research, that recommendation came from who?
Once we get this, uh, okay, what was the question?
I was asking her, where'd that recommendation come from? Based on what the officer said they were owed, correct? Yeah, did we go any further to investigate that, if what they were told? Mm-hmm. But that's where we stopped. They told us this is what they were owed, we went on their word, what we owed, correct? And that's what y'all, y'all calculated? So we didn't, we didn't investigate it any further, correct? And that we verified through...
Payroll sheets should be a confirmation of themselves.
Payroll sheets and time sheets should, should be sufficient.
They're not kept up with right, and that sounds like another problem within itself.
Okay. Tammy, about how long did you spend looking into the amount of time that was due to these officers, roughly? Both, together? Both, together? So, you didn't just randomly arbitrarily pull a number out? Thank you for your hard work on that situation. I appreciate it.
Okay. Look, we've settled this issue and we're beating the bush with it, and we need to move on. And I'm hopeful, once we get this new K-9 policy in place, that this will be rectified. And that's one of the issues that we're working on hard, and I appreciate the council's work on this, and Mr. Morpheus also. And we will be working on this and getting it together. So, it's clear. It was not clear before, and it will be clear once we get this completed. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. The adoption of the K-9, we did put that off. We are gonna have these, Mr. Morpheus combined these and come up with, with the policy for us, and we will have that available at next month's meeting, and we will adopt it at that time. At this time, we'll move on into new business, and at this time, I will be pleased to accept the nomination or for the appointment of the new city manager, Mr. Marcus Abernathy.
Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we appoint Marcus Abernathy as our new city manager effective immediately.
I will second that.
A motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? The only discussion that I would have about it was this was unanimous. The city council has worked extremely hard to get to this point. Also, the extra people we had that did the assessment panel for us, they were all experts in this field, and they were unanimous when they came back to us with the same thing we had. So, we're just extremely pleased. And at this time, all in favor of Mr. Abernathy? Say aye. All opposed? Okay. All in favor? At this time, I would introduce Mr. Marcus Abernathy if he would come up and take his seat. And immediately... Immediately before we go into closed sessions, we'll give anyone an opportunity to get with the city council and Mr. Abernathy to take pictures. And then, when we get to the comments section, he will have an opportunity to make any comments that he would like to make. So, give him an opportunity to get himself together there and caught up with us. Okay. The next item that we have before us is item number 10, which is a public hearing on the Myers Ray zoning request. At this time, I will open the hearing for a public comment. And what we have is, we have a situation where Mr. Ms. Myers would like to place a mobile home on their property off of Freeman Mill Road and on Myers Lane, and there has been one there previously. The situation is, is that they do have to get approval to change it from R-20 to RA-20. And also, they're gonna have to subdivide the lot. And the information I'm giving you here is the information that I got from, from the planning board and their recommendation. Mr. Ms. Myers, is either one of you have a comment tonight that you wish to make about this? Nothing? Or, come on, Alan.
Like you said, a mobile home's been there before, and all the hookups are there. And we're not putting a chicken farm out there. It's just a, just a mobile home. And that's it.
Where's the location at? Excuse me.
Off Freeman Mill Road, outside of Hamlet.
Which, between Family Dairy Road and South Road?
Yeah.
How far down?
About halfway.
About, a little more than halfway around.
Okay. It's right there about the first curve where the other...
Well, it loops around out to that, but yes, on up on the second, past the second curve.
On the right or left?
Left.
Left.
Yeah, you can't see it from the hallway, yeah.
Just past where that little trailer park is, on the way up to the curve. That's it.
Yeah.
That's it. Is there, uh, thank you, Alan. Is there anyone else?
Uh, about ninety-five, I think.
Okay, was the last time it was there?
Yeah.
And you have septic tank?
It's already there.
County water?
My aunt lived in it. She didn't live in it long, and it was pulled back out when she passed away.
Have you taken care of the issue about subdivising the lot?
Yeah. Yeah, I've already talked to a survey.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here that has any comments on this property? If not, I will close the hearing at this time. And on item 11, I would ask for a vote on rezoning the Myers property from R-20 to RA-20. Am I correct on that, Tammy?
Mayor, I...
Let me ask you a question. This was voted on by the planning board?
Yes, they recommended.
And this was a recommendation from the planning board that this be, this request be granted?
That's correct.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a question. What's the difference in R-20 and RA-20? You know, I know Gail's not here to answer that question.
Yeah, residential 20 zoning does not permit mobile homes. Residential agricultural 20 does allow it. That's the difference.
The setbacks and everything are exactly the same. It's the whole mobile home distinction. When we wrote the last mobile home warrant, we made it an RA-20. This piece of property is surrounded by as many Rs as it is Ra's. It's a very mixed area out there. So, it's more, the planning board's all towards the technicality than anything.
I forgot we had the planning board here. Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's why I was looking that way.
Any other questions or anything, county or anybody?
I don't, I don't have any questions, sir.
I would entertain a motion then.
I'm gonna make a motion that we rezone this from R-20 to RA-20.
I'll second it.
Second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Ms. Myers, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Mayor.
Yes.
I can't remember if we did a rezoning at Hamlet, but we are required to adopt a consistency statement that goes with any rezoning. It's required by GS 168 383, and I can walk y'all through that. I mean, it's really just a procedural step. So, the first thing you need to do, you've adopted the rezoning, I need to get a motion from one of our council members about essentially saying that you believe the rezoning is consistent with Hamlet's comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm just pulling this out of nowhere, but we were recently sued over this very issue in another town I represent, so it's been much on my mind lately.
That we hadn't encountered that, but we... So, I need a motion to...
I think it'd be enough to just give some explanation of why you think that it is consistent with Hamlet's comprehensive plan.
I'll make a motion.
And do we have the, did you say you had a motion, Ms. Kirkland? Oh, yeah. It could be as simple as, uh, it could be as simple as, you know, we believe it's consistent with the existing zoning in the area, or something like that.
Right, for mobile homes and...
Yeah, it's consistent with what's in the area. All right. Somebody make a motion on it.
I just did one.
All right. He made a motion that we determined...
Because that is just basically what is surrounding and then, and of course, any policies with mobile homes and all that.
Okay. So, I have a motion.
And is that so we don't get into a spot zoning situation?
It's actually, it's actually so you don't get sued over failing to adopt the consistency statement. It's this technical procedural issue.
Thank you for that.
I need a second. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I've got a second. Is there any further discussion on consistency?
You have something else?
All right. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, I'm not done yet, and you can thank the North County Court of Appeals for this.
Go ahead.
They had a case that came out in July and said that the statement you adopted is halfway there, but you need to do more. I'm not making this up. You also need to adopt some sort of statement for why you believe it is reasonable and in the public interest. Again, I think something to the effect of, we believe it's consistent with the land use pattern, and that part of our jurisdiction is completely sufficient.
Can I stop you there for just a second?
Yes, sir.
Can we do all in favor on the first one?
So, we have to make a separate motion on all three of these issues?
Um, the Court of Appeals has suggested that you need a separate motion on all three. I think you could maybe do the two consistency statements together.
Okay. So, we've got a, all right. So, so far, we've got a motion on the first consistency statement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there had been a vote to approve.
No, it has not been approved.
I apologize. Y'all could do a single motion and just...
All right. We got a motion?
I'll go ahead and vote on that. I'm sorry, I gotta have a second, Mayor.
And if we add, if we add the consistency statement stating that, second part?
That, that further you believe it's reasonable and in the public interest because the rezoning is consistent with the land use of the area.
Okay. And would you add that to your motion? We'll get there. We're learning as we go.
Reasonable and consistent.
Reasonable and in the public interest.
I would love to have had this in writing.
Yeah. Okay, so, we're meeting, making a motion that this meets the consistency plan with the city of Hamlet that's reasonable and...
In the public interest.
In the public interest. Yeah. Got you.
All right. So, you have...
We're learning some stuff.
Have you amended your motion to that?
It has been amended to that. Now, we just need a second.
Wait, got it. We already had a second. We need to amend that. Are you good with that?
Second.
Okay. All right. Is there, all right, we're finished to that point. Is there any comment for a comment, anybody? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is that all of it? Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
I would like to say thank you for catching that. That's the first.
You're rezoned.
And covered very well, so...
And again, I mean, the Court of Appeals has just recently emphasized that, I mean, they validated zoning in Charlotte over this, and so, uh, we're just trying to be as careful as we can with this stuff.
Okay. We'll make sure in the future that we know about this and we'll have it all in writing, and that's, that's a good thing. So, that's good. And, yeah, Gail, Gail's on a cruise this week, didn't she? Okay. Item number 12 is an appointment to the Hamlet ABC Board. The term for Ms. Dorothy Bynum was expiring. However, there are no other applicants at this time, and the ABC Board requests that Ms. Dorothy Bynum be reappointed.
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the ABC Board, and Ms. Bynum is definitely an asset to the board, and I would make a motion that she be reappointed for another term.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Add in. Jonathan, is there any comment, any further comments on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number 13 is appointment to the Hamlet Housing Authority Board. Mr. Charles Bristow has been on there for some time, and his term is expiring. And the Hamlet Housing Authority Board has requested that Mr. Bristow be reappointed. What are your wishes, council?
Make a motion. We reappoint Mr. Charles Bristow for the Hamlet Housing Authority Board.
I thought that was just your appointment. That's only your...
Oh, is it? Okay, it's the mayor's.
That's the mayor's.
Okay. Well, that's taken care of. Mr. Bristow is appointed. Next item, item number 14, approval of tax releases. You have before you the tax releases, and take a look at them.
I don't see anything here unusual.
And I have a motion.
I move to approve the tax releases as presented.
Okay, I got a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second. Is there any comments on the tax releases other than the fact that these releases come from one of two things? Either the county released it, or these people have been charged for motor vehicle taxes that they should not have been charged for. But anyway, based on the county, these are tax releases. So, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is a, a use agreement for the Hamlet Model Railroad Club. And what they have done, they have received a large train, model train set that has been donated to them, and we have provided space for them in the basement of the Hamlet Depot and Museum for them to work on this piece of equipment. And we have before us a use agreement, and we need to have an approval on this use agreement from the council.
That's a use agreement for you to be able to work on it in the...
For them to be able and relieve the city of any, any liability.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Lewis.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bowie. Is any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just dumb question. When I was drafting this, I understood there was a model train, but I didn't know this is something that the club is intending to display to the public, or if it's solely for their use. Doesn't really matter. There's just a box to check on the agreement.
Oh, it will be for, it will be for public.
Okay. We'll make sure the agreement notes that. Thank you, Mayor.
It's not necessarily here, but they are gonna put it on public display somewhere.
As they manage to get it back in, back in shape. Back in shape. Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We, I have to say that this was an issue that where we helped out the citizens of Hamlet. It was something that, of course, didn't have to do, but it was in the best interest of the city. And we're, we're all trying to do the best we can to help everybody out and make improvements. And this was just one thing that we felt like we could do, and it was a help to the citizens of Hamlet, and I'm glad we were able to do it. Okay. Item number 17, mayoral proclamation recognizing our local teen Ashton Locklear. For ones who don't know, she is a, yes...
We added 16 back.
Did we add, oh, I, excuse me, we did. I'd already marked that out. Before we do that, let's go to item 16 on a discussion regarding the change to Hamlet's fire district, and we will accept comments at this time by the fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor, council. First, we'd like to congratulate and welcome our new city manager, Mr. Abernathy. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you in the future, like tomorrow. Morning, early. Just a little brief history of what's the change in the fire district is and how it came about and the process that we go through to change a district in any fire district in the, in the county, actually. There's nine fire departments within Richmond County. And our district covers the city of Hamlet, the town of Dobbin Heights, and a large portion of rural area in a lot of different directions, to South Carolina, to Scotland County, to, toward the racetrack and so forth. The piece of land we're talking about, or the road that we're talking about tonight, is Fox Road, which is off Highway 177 north. We currently cover this property, or this road, within Hamlet Fire and Rescue District and have for, forever. The residents have come up with a petition to change the district to Hoffman District, solely because of the insurance rating that they're getting from their insurance carrier based upon the distance they live from the fire station in Hamlet. It's seven road miles from the fire station to actually to Fox Road. And then Fox Road is three miles in addition to that to US-1 at Fox Road, and that's the And then Fox Road is three miles in addition to that to US One at Fox Road. And that's the furthest point in our district, um, which is ten point two miles from the fire station. The insurance carriers that cover these homes there consider these homes as a class ten insurance rating, which is the highest premium that you can pay because of the distance that the fire station or the fire trucks have to travel. Hoffman has a, uh, a substation that they have built and have in service in Marston just past the racetrack. This property would be within three to four miles of their fire station and these homeowners would get a tremendous discount in their homeowner's insurance. Uh, so therefore, the, the, the residents of that area has come up with a written petition to leave Hamlet's district and go into Hoffman's fire district. The process from here would be, um, first of all, we, there's a fire fee per structure that Hamlet collects from all of our structures that we cover outside of the city limits of Hamlet. This road, this, the three mile road generates about sixteen hundred and fifty dollars annually. Uh, if, uh, so if we give this road up, then we would look, we would have a potential loss of revenue of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars because of, of the fire fee per structure that we collect. Um, the process from this point would be, uh, the, the council meets again in, I think it's November eleventh. And the Fire Chiefs Association meets again the nineteenth of November. Uh, depending on the board's wishes, tonight or November, uh, I will have to go before the Chiefs Association and this petition will come up there. All nine fire chiefs in the, in the county will have to vote. It will have to be a unanimous vote from all the fire chiefs for this petition to go forward. If the chiefs vote unanimously, then the, the petition goes then to the county commissioners for the final approval. And the commit, county commissioners will make the final approval of the change of the district. And at that point in time, the residents will be notified, the insurance carriers of those residents will be notified, we will be notified as, as well as Hoffman Fire and Rescue. But that's the reason that they're requesting to, to leave our district and to get into a closer fire station for an insurance break.
Now Hoffman is a volunteer department, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Now, would we still have to, if they had a fire there, would we still have to go?
We would be the first responding department, um, if they didn't respond. The way the, the nine-one-one system has been developed is they'll, they'll page a fire department, let's say it's a fire. They'll page the fire department within three minutes if they don't respond. They would page them again. Within three minutes if they don't respond and they page that same department and the next closest department. So then that would be us. Within six minutes, we'd get a page if they did not respond. And then we would head that way with our equipment.
We're, we're basically still gonna have to go.
Yes, sir.
Is Northside Station not closer than we are? Fox Road Station too?
Northside Station is about the same distance. The, the folks just chose Hoffman for some reason. I, I don't know.
No, I meant as far as, uh, as, as mutual aid response, wouldn't they be closer than us?
Um, again, they would be volunteer also. They would probably go ahead and call, you know, the paid department where they could go and get somebody on the road.
Uh, I guess my other question is, is, you know, sixteen hundred dollars to us, but look what we're doing to these people that live out there. And that we're talking about, some of them would be dropped from a ten all the way down to a six because they're within a thousand feet of fire hydrants. And, uh, you know, I just, somehow I just feel like it's unfair for us to do that to people if we don't have to. But I would think that Northside would be the first, uh, one to be called secondary rather than Hamlet. That might be something we work on.
And this also affects the EMS district also. They would take the fire district and the rescue district and our EMS calls also from that, from that area. So then Hoffman would be paged out to run the EMS calls as well as regs on that same road.
But we are talking, we're talking several hundred dollars a year for a lot of these people.
Yeah, I've talked to some of the folks in the other areas and their, their insurance premium, uh, when the insurance, the insurance carriers actually have got a new system now that they are better pinpointing how the, the distance, the road mileage distance from a fire station to their, uh, their clients or their insured property. Um, they're using a GIS system now where they used to, to use a different system and, and they're be- beginning to get really good, you know, accurate information. And some of the folks we've talked to, their insurance premium has gone from like four hundred dollars annually to fourteen hundred dollars annually.
I believe several years ago, we gave up part of Fox Road to Northside, didn't we?
That's correct.
And that was because of that insurance issue. It would be save some money.
And Hoffman would actually be, and then they also charge a fee per structure and they would be, uh, receiving an additional fifteen hundred and twenty dollars annually with their fire fee if they took this area over.
Uh, so if the chiefs vote on it, David, it's gonna change our fire district regardless if they vote in favor of this.
Yes, but if it's gotta be unanimous, if you give me a, a consensus that you don't want this to happen, I will vote no, then it dies right there. But because this is a monetary, this is a budgetary issue with, with funding, I don't have the authority to vote at the chiefs' meeting without the pleasure of the board.
I appreciate you taking time today to talk with me about this because I knew a little bit, but you really enlightened me a, a lot and I really appreciate that. Um...
I didn't realize it's seven miles out there.
Yeah. What, you see any long-term ramifications of other citizens in other areas doing this same thing? And eventually, we lose a lot of these residences and in turn still be required to answer calls there?
Yeah, we got-
The long-term situations.
We have a large district up in that direction. Uh, we cover probably approximately ten thousand, uh, residents, you know, within our response area. Six thousand being within the city, about nine hundred in Dobbin Heights and the rest in our rural area. So we've got a large rural area. And I do see the, you know, the possibility of other citizens wanting to try to get as closest, you know, to a fire station or use a different fire station, whether it be us or East Rockingham or, or whatever, to, to lower their insurance premium because that's, you know, it's really impacting, you know, the, the homeowner themselves.
Chief, I understand you correctly. It doesn't really matter what, what we say or what we want. It's gonna be a decision of the, uh, Fire Chiefs Association.
But they have to be unanimous.
Yeah, but in regard, even if you vote no, it's not gonna make any difference.
If I vote no, it's, it's over.
It's not gonna happen.
It's got to be unanimous. All nine of them have to agree. Oh, okay.
Yeah, all nine's got to agree. So if you give me an indication that you don't want it to pass and you don't, you're not in favor of losing this revenue, then I'll vote no, then it cannot go before the county commissioners.
I don't see how we can justify doing this to citizens. I mean, sixteen hundred dollars for us, I know, I mean, that's sixteen hundred we could use, but that could be one homeowner's premium difference and, and I, I think it would be-
If they have an opportunity to reduce their, and I've thought of several hundred dollars a year.
If a lot of people are, are doing that and a lot of areas are trying to get out, there's a chance we might pick up some somewhere if that trend goes. We might get some that are closer to us than right now in another fire district. So I don't, I don't see keeping this from people. I mean, they can look, go from a class ten to a class five or a class six.
See, just like, um, the Myers here, the Myers Lane, um, if you get to Bentley Dairy Road, um, at Freeman Mill Road, the city limits goes a little bit further past that. Well, East Rockingham covers that district. If you turn right on Freeman Mill Road, East Rockingham Fire Department covers everything on the left-hand side of the road, which is next, right across the street from the city limits. So yes, you're correct, you know, I'm not sure what the travel distance is to, to the old Carroll Company, but their district comes all the way to, across the street from the Carroll Company.
Well, it's right up there, city limits.
Absolutely. And then Myers Lane would be in East Rockingham's district, right across the street from our district.
And as far as us having to back them up, somebody has to back us up. It's the same thing. Another department has to come here from Rockingham or East Rockingham.
We get Mitchell Lake probably twice a year maybe at the most, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but they still, if we have that and somebody has to back us up, we got issues, somebody has to back us up. I'm in favor of letting these people-
Well, I would be, yeah, and I'd be in favor of, you know, right now, Northside's their secondary going up number one anyway. And Northside should be their secondary from Fox Road.
And that fire department's new it, Hoffman and Northside, but the Hoffman, that number two station's new.
The number two station's brand new, yeah. It's been there a couple of years.
I don't, if, if we need to vote on it, or I don't know what we need to do.
I guess just have a consensus on it, but as far as that goes, because it's really not an issue.
I'm, I'm for leasing that to these people so they can save money.
I agree with that. I'm, you know, as far as a mayor, I agree with it. I hate to take people's money like that.
I mean, for over sixteen hundred dollars, I, I, no, I just shouldn't give it back.
We're getting sixteen hundred dollars and there's no telling how much it's costing them plus a twenty-five dollar or thirty dollar fee, whatever.
Plus seven, seven miles from us.
Yeah, and it's seven miles from us.
But the chiefs' meeting isn't until, again, the nineteenth of November. So if you wanna wait till, till the next month and let's make sure that this is, you know, what you wanna do, I've still got time to, to change it or, or if you change your mind, so.
Do we have any residents from that area here tonight? Appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one question, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way, because I mean, I agree too, for us to be costing those people that much money for sixteen hundred dollars? It, it's probably not many calls and you've done spent that sixteen hundred dollars.
We don't get many calls up there anymore.
Yeah, we don't get many, but is there any way that we could talk to Hoffman and possibly get some kind of agreement with them on, on what we're losing? And I'm not, I know they're trying to give as much as they can and they're only gonna give fifteen hundred dollars.
I, I looked today and, um, I was gonna talk to Mr. Morpheus before the, the meeting, but I didn't get a chance to see him. He was busy. But there is a, I think there's a provision in the law that states that if a fire department gives up revenue, the receiving department has to compensate for a certain amount of time up to a certain amount of money. But I would need to verify that again. I read it a long time ago, but I just didn't, Mr. Morpheus, you may want to-
I'm, I'm not saying take all their money. That's not what I'm saying because that wouldn't be, you know, right for them. But I'm just looking because we're, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
I'd be happy to take a little bit out for that committee. I know there is some, some key shifting with annexation issues.
I do know the annexation is correct. I do know that.
But when you're talking about changing the fire districts, I don't, I don't think anything else to, uh, Hoffman and Hamlet couldn't negotiate something, so let me put that, you know, uh, to the answer.
Thank you for your time that you put in on that, fire chief.
You're welcome.
We can make it effective next budget year so we could absorb it then if we had to.
Well, yeah, that would probably be the best way to do it because it's, uh, we got this in our budget right now. It's in the fire budget, so. All right, we'll, we'll take a look at it again in, uh, November chief night and see where we are there, okay? Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on that? All right, now we'll go to item number seventeen, which is mayoral proclamation recognizing Ashton Locklear, who is a gymnast from the city of Hamlet. Whereas the city of Hamlet is exceedingly proud to honor hometown gymnast Ashton, Ashton Locklear on this celebratory occasion and whereas Ashton Locklear began her gymnastic training at Physical Awareness and Gymnastics in Hamlet under the direction of Terry Bennett at the age of two, and she started competing at the age of five. And whereas she has demonstrated an outstanding spirit of dedication and hard work the past fourteen years by continuously training and making sacrifices to achieve her goals of competitive gymnastics. And whereas Ashton now continues her training at Everest Gymnastics Training, an elite training center in Huntersville, North Carolina. And whereas Ashton's family has provided her with continuous support and encouragement in her endeavors. And whereas she finished first in uneven bars in the twenty-twelve regionals in Kissimmee, Florida. And whereas Ashton finished seventh all around in the Nastia Lukin Cup and finished first on bars in twenty thirteen. And whereas in twenty fourteen, this year, she scored an impressive fifteen point seven to take first place in the uneven bars at the Secret U.S. Classic in Chicago. And whereas Ashton was named to the senior national team at the national championships in Pittsburgh. And there was selected, there was selected to compete for the U.S. at the Senior Pan Am Games in Toronto, where she took first place on bars and was part of the first place team. Whereas Ashton and the U.S. women's team made U.S. gymnastics history by winning the USA's second consecutive world team title at the twenty-fourteen World Championship in Nanine, China. And whereas she has exhibited qualities of leadership, respect, and leadership serving as a role model to her community, peers, and team members. Now therefore, the city of Hamlet honors the outstanding achievements of Ashton Locklear, who in distinguishing herself, has brought great honor and credit to her family, her friends, and her city. In witness thereof, I, William Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Hamlet to be affixed this fourteenth day of October twenty fourteen. And this will be presented to her. She was not able to be here tonight, but I will present it to her tomorrow night at a, uh, special get-together for her down at the, uh, gymnastics on, uh, Hamlet Avenue at six thirty P.M. And that's one, that's another feather in the cap of Hamlet. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item number eighteen, which is proclamation observing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer affects so many women and their families, not only in Hamlet, North Carolina, but throughout the country. One in eight women are diagnosed with breast cancer during their lifetime. Disease the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women in the U.S. other than skin cancer. And whereas during twenty fourteen, statistics show that there will be approximately two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty cases of invasive breast cancer diagnosed among women in the U.S. with about forty thousand deaths due to the disease. And whereas the two point eight million breast cancer survivors living in the U.S. today are a testament to the courage as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. And whereas there continues to be a need to increase awareness of breast cancer screening and to promote research for the prevention and cure of breast cancer. And whereas October is designated as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the pink ribbon is the internationally recognized symbol of breast cancer awareness. Now therefore, the city of Hamlet hereby proclaims the month of October twenty fourteen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hamlet and urges all citizens to wear pink ribbons in recognition of breast cancer awareness and in honor of women who have lost their lives to breast cancer and of those women who are now bravely fighting the battle. Adopted this fourteenth day of October twenty fourteen, William Bayless, Mayor. At, at this time, before I go to departmental reports, I'm gonna take just a real short recess and give the, uh, council an opportunity to gather down here in front of the, uh, podium along with the new manager and the folks that wanted to take pictures. We'll let them take pictures. We'll do that right quick. I wanted to recognize Marcus Antonoff, but I think they just left. They, uh, actually left. They left. But, uh, his fiancee's grandparents are here, uh, Charles and Carlene Hall. Hill? Hill, Hill, Charles, I'm sorry. Girlfriend, okay, we're getting you close then, aren't we? See what we're trying to do. We're trying to get married off here right away. Yeah, there you go. However, but, uh, we're certainly glad to have you. Okay, at this time, we'll, uh, entertain, uh, reports from our departmental. Uh, fire chief, you have anything else, sir, tonight? Uh, Captain Waters, anything for police department? Okay, Jerry, you have anything for us tonight? Okay, Jerry, you have anything for us tonight? We are well aware of that, and we also know that the county has no plan at this point. They've put it out there, but there's no plan. So that's gonna be interesting. We've got plans already drawn for a new gym, we can take them to them immediately.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may go right ahead.
Jerry, the issue with this tournament that was, you know, had some calls on it, it's gonna get some clarification, so everybody will know we'll be singing all the same sheet of music. You know, the, the, the weekend tournament, playing Saturday, got, got changed and got bumped, and you explained that to me, and I understand that everybody's in agreement now, and that's good, and I'm, and I'm content with that. The only concern that I have is, is when that schedule was made for that Saturday, and I know the other leagues played Saturday, because I saw some of them Saturday morning play it, was that before these other, these two teams had scheduled a tournament, or after?
Hey, have you got your mic on?
So they, they had already, our schedule was already out?
No, they, our schedule didn't come out, and they'd already made theirs.
Okay.
Normally, they gave that schedule the night of the draft, or that night he didn't give it out, just like a few days later, or a week later, they're scheduled, they'd already scheduled their tournaments.
Okay, um, so they'd already, I guess these teams had already committed to their tournament? Before this? Okay, the only concern that I have about that is, is we need to give these teams heads-up schedules for practice and for tournaments, I mean, excuse me, for our regular season, because now it's interfering with the football, some of these kids wanna play football, they're missing their first three practices, or at least two of them, because this overrun, it should've been over with.
Well, technically, they're, it's, all they're missing is conditions, because all that is-
But that's why the coaches select their players, too, from the draft.
Yeah, and watching.
Right.
Some of them left down there today, went up there, because there's only two kids, as far as I know, that are playing football, who played soccer tonight, and as soon as they got through their first game, their mom was taking them up there at the end.
Okay.
And I, I explained to coaches, and I complained to people, when I can't give referees, we can't play.
I understand that.
This is the first time in eight years we've ever played on Saturday.
Right.
And it's the first time in eight years we've ever finished soccer and started football the next day.
We're under the gun with the football, I mean, we're getting criticized now, because our football starts so late, and I think this is the first time football's probably started this early.
It is.
Well, and I'm not opposed to that, because we crunch a season down to, to where we got three games a week, and that's not fair in tackle football, I mean, that's unheard of. We, we shouldn't even be doing that, um, but, I'm not blaming us, because we're the only recreation department that offers football anywhere, and if it wasn't for us the last twelve years, there would be no youth football program in this county. So I don't wanna lose it, but I just, we need to be flexible with it, um, and make sure that we don't have, where the, the coaches that are doing other teams, and players that are on other teams, which I fully support, uh, traveling teams and all, because that develops skills and, and, and good representation of our town, but we can't have those mixed up, where you got two teams that aren't gonna be there versus two that will be, and you're looking at forfeits, because that's not fair for the sixty-four kids total that would've had to forfeit. Two teams had to forfeit, two teams got to play, it wouldn't have been fair, so, let's try to minimize those issues as much as we can.
Well, I thought I had to explain to the coaches, and then one coach?
Well, I can understand both sides of it, I can understand.
He said he'd want to forfeit, then he tells the city management, it's totally something totally different. Thursday night, he told me, he said I can play any night but Wednesday. That ain't what he told me at first, he's gonna never have to forfeit. Only two kids missing.
Right.
And where there was eleven or twelve, would've been missing the other way, and I did what the best for the kids, and thank God it didn't rain tonight, and I hope it don't rain Thursday, and our kids get to play soccer, they get to play in their tournament, because our recreation programs aren't for me, they ain't for the next partial recreation director, they ain't for the coaches, it's for the kids, and if we ain't out here for the kids, we don't need the partial recreation program.
I understand.
I'm sorry.
We handle the-
I've been investing with this thirty years or more, and I, it's for the kids. I've never coached anybody a kid to, never will.
That's on the more side, by the way. More than thirty.
Well, yeah, you were down there. I was there all the way.
Right, well, I'm glad y'all got it resolved, and I think everybody, as far as I can tell, everybody's content, happy with it.
Sorry, I had to call you out.
But we appreciate, yeah, we appreciate the job you're doing down there, thank you so much.
Just like I told you Saturday, I have to cut and grass. Grass gotta get cut, I ain't got but one person.
And he was working Saturday, cutting grass, dark.
It's more or less hate to begin with, because of miscommunication, but once, kind of, it was-
I'm, I'm trying to do two jobs, two big jobs in one.
We gotta find somebody.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Garner, our I.T. Director slash Museum Coordinator right now, you have any comments for us tonight? We certainly appreciate Ms. Garner's help, we appreciate what you're doing to help us, thank you so much, can't tell you how much.
We did actually go and get that award for the tornado building.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
This is from the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina, is the Gertrude S. Caraway Award of Merit for the Preservation of the Tornado Building.
Fantastic, that's great. Mr. Brown, do you have anything? Mr. Stubbs? Thank you. Gil, you got anything for us tonight? Nothing? Okay, uh, Tammy, do you have anything?
Uh, just a few items, uh, first, too, I want to welcome Marcus to the city of Hamlet, and we look forward to working with him, and I also want to thank Candace and Zach for going to Raleigh to, to receive the award for the tornado building Friday, that was very generous of them, and we certainly appreciate it. Uh, one last item, we, the city of Hamlet will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, in observance of Veterans Day, and the city office will be closed that day. I'm not sure about the garbage garbage, so the runners pick up, and we'll be there following Wednesday.
Okay. And, uh, the, at this time, we'll ask our new city manager if he has any comments. Thank you, thank you on that. Uh, I will say, too, for anybody that might not be here later on, on November, Wednesday, November the twenty-ninth, we will be having a meet and greet down at the Rotunda for, uh, from five thirty P.M. to seven P.M. That's Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, five thirty P.M. to seven P.M., it'll be a meet and greet, uh, for Mr. Abernathy, and we certainly would encourage everybody to get the word out, come down and visit and meet him, and so you'll know who our, uh, new manager is. And before we go farther here, let's see, Mr. Morpheus, did you have anything for us tonight? Okay. We appreciate the good work you've done on all this, uh, changing these ordinances and stuff, this has been a real bear. Uh, gentlemen, the next council meeting is scheduled for the night of November the eleventh, which is a city holiday, do we want to have it that night, or would you like to back it up one night, or?
Can't back it up, it'd be election night, so you have to go forward.
Yeah, that was right, it would be-
Can't go forward, because he has to have, Fire Chief has to have an answer for the, uh-
What about on Monday night? Would that work? Anybody? Which would be the, uh-
What's wrong with Tuesday?
Tuesday's vote day.
First Tuesday, election day.
Yeah, that's the fourth. That won't be the, uh-
Okay, Fire Chief, you said the nineteenth was on a Wednesday, so-
So we couldn't meet on the eighteenth.
We'll meet on the eighteenth.
Well, I don't know if I'm gonna be in town.
I won't be in town on the eighteenth.
Uh-uh.
Let's do that Monday.
Do Monday the seventeenth?
No, Monday the fourth.
Do Monday the tenth.
Monday the tenth.
Okay.
Seems to me, when you retire, anything's all right.
Okay.
I strive for that.
Maybe one day I'll know.
I'm working for it.
What month are we in? Octo-, October the twenty-ninth is when we're having the meet and greet, that's Wednesday week. Oh, got me confused tonight, but I stay that way, that's all right. All right, November the tenth is good with everybody, am I correct?
Yes.
All right?
That good with, Mr. Morpheus?
Is that good with the city manager and Mr. Morpheus?
November tenth.
Okay. I guess I need a motion on that, to change that date.
I'll make a motion, we're moving the November eleventh meeting to November the tenth.
Got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Very good, it'll be seven P.M. on November the tenth. And, uh, be sure y'all get that date right on the meet and greet, it's October the twenty-ninth, at the Depot Rotunda, okay? If you'll get that word out for us. All right, gentlemen, at this time, I need to have a motion to go into a closed session. First one, two, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A three, this is to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A five, in the negotiating of a real estate contract, and, um, I need a motion on it.
I'm making a motion, going to closed session.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we should not be very long, it's just a real, okay, we're back in open session. Uh, in the closed session, we gave some direction to the attorney on a real estate issue, and we also amended the closed session, we had to have a discussion about a particular employee, and, uh, we have got, taken care of that little matter. Uh, at this time, we will look at the comments from council, and I'll start with Councilman Pressler.
I don't have anything.
Councilman McQueen?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to, uh, thank the Fire Chief again for enlightening me on some of this stuff today, talked with, uh, talked with you for a while. Uh, I would like to thank Zach for doing a good job, not only as our I.T. person, but also as a laborer down at the, uh, the Depot, taking the model train in, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but Zach's wife, won't make no more mistakes, uh, for your volunteer time, it's well appreciated. For Robert, uh, doing a fine job getting his back up to speed, the complaints on the water, um, has went away, thank you for that hard work. Uh, Billy, thank you for all you do down at the, at the shop, um, it doesn't go unnoticed. And Tammy, I, I, I don't know what to say, other than thank you times two, you have stepped up and performed your job in an admirable way, when some folks have come to the city and attacked you while you're doing your job. Some of the situations and some of the talk that people has done to you was inappropriate, and I just want to thank you for doing your job in a professional manner. Marcus, congratulations, I, I look forward to working with you, I know you will help move Hamlet forward. If I was on Twitter, I would do hashtag moving forward, I don't do the Twitter thing, so I won't do that. You need anything, feel free to call, um, I hope all the members of the council and the community will embrace you and allow you to do your job the way that I know you can do your job. Mr. Morpheus, I think I say it at least every meet, I really appreciate what you do for us and this city, although it may cost us a little more on the front end, I feel confident that we're protected on the back end. Tonight was a shining example of you knowing more about policies, public policies, laws, than what we know as a board, and I would just like to thank you for doing that in a manner that, that you do. For the board, um, I would just like to thank everyone on this board for participating in the process of hiring our new town manager. There's been a lot published, talked about, about the board not getting along, and you know what, we don't get along on everything, uh, probably never will, probably won't see eye to eye, and I'm fine with that, but I can say that this board worked together productively and efficiently in going through the process of hiring the new city manager, and for myself, I'm very proud and pleased to say I took part in that, so I'd like to thank everyone on the board for that, and I think I have covered it all.
Thank you, Ms. McQueen, Mr. Lewis.
Um, I'd like to welcome Marcus Lewis, new city manager, and I look forward to working with you also, uh, if you don't have my number, be sure to talk to Tammy and get it, I'll be glad to call me anytime, uh, between the hours of, uh, seven in the morning and seven at night. No, I've just picked it, just call me whenever you need to, if I can help, it'd be of any assistance, and, uh, I appreciate that. Uh, also, I'd like to say thank you, Tammy, Gail, Jill, Edna, uh, for all your hard work during this time, uh, you have been invaluable, I mean, you've done a fantastic job, we appreciate it, uh, I think tomorrow will be a happy day for Tammy, but we do appreciate everything you've done, and we thank you, and I'd like to also thank Mr. Lamont for what he's doing, uh, it's not easy, and we appreciate him stepping up and doing everything he can, uh, to make the parking rec work like it's going, and as well as it's going, so, thank you, Jerry, for what you do, I appreciate that.
Mayor, could I just one-
Jerry, thanks for all you've done, stepped up and did a lot, um, and possibly, maybe if there's anyone, Marcus, that can assist Jerry with some of the grass cutting, could we please make sure we have, he's getting, okay, okay, I, I, I thought I misunderstood it, okay. Okay, uh, but anyway, thank you, Jerry, appreciate you.
Tony, it's still your time.
Sorry, Tony.
That's okay, way of announcement, uh, the council government's gonna have its annual dinner Thursday night, uh, it's gonna be down at the farmer's market, uh, the theme, I think they said the theme was beach or something like that, yeah, they was talking about shorts and flip-flops, and I'm not gonna tell you what I said I was gonna wear, so we'll move on with that, but that's Thursday night at the farmer's market down in Lumberton, so I'd like to invite all down for that, uh, and also, I am on the Transportation Advisory Committee down at the car, and something that I've been working on, and if you get a chance to call D.O.T., whoever you wanna call, I am working hard on getting a turning light at seventy-four and one seventy-seven, uh, for the people that's turning, going west on seventy-four, and making a left turn going south on one seventy-seven, uh, we need one there desperately, and I am, I'm bugging D.O.T. every time we have a meeting, and I'm doing everything I can, so if you can make some phone calls and we can make this happen, uh, today we was making a turn there, going out to the college, and a car turned at last minute, and there likely been an accident there for that very reason, so, uh, I am working on that, try to see what we can get done, and thank all the city employees for all they're doing.
I will have to say that we have actually, because of my time working on the road here, that we, it has been over forty years we've tried to get a left turn signal put there, and they haven't done it, so you'll be working a miracle if you get it in.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate it. Mr. Martin?
Well, I would just reiterate what Councilman McQueen and Councilman Lewis had to say, uh, I would like to personally congratulate and welcome Mr. Abernathy to the town of Hamlet, city of Hamlet, as our city manager. I am on the A.B.C. board, and we had a meeting today, and we had a very good financial report from our auditor, uh, a copy of which will be sent to the Hamlet, if you hadn't already got it. Okay, but it was a, it was a good report, other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Bowie?
Well?
Oh, excuse me, yes, sir.
On the turn signal.
On the turn signal, I will make a couple phone calls.
Okay, very good.
Let me know who you're talking to.
Mr. Bowie?
All right, I'm just going to echo kind of what everyone said, but I will hit on you, Mr. Abernathy, for a definite welcome to you, I just want to personally say that to you. I know we're going to do great things, I know you're excited, and maybe a little overwhelmed to begin with, but we'll get there, I look forward to it, you're sitting beside the best, he's been a blessing to us over the past several months in decision-making and making sure we kind of did what we needed to do to ensure we didn't get in any situations here in the city. Jerry, I have spoken to you several times, and I know, you know, with Parks and Rec, you got your hands full, we get to see you run from field to field, so, you know, definitely can thank you as well. And between the staff at City Hall and Police Department, you guys have kind of, you know, pulled things together with, you know, interim positions and all, but just know that help is coming, we have our manager now, and he will be working on that to get some help for you all, and I look forward to that, you know, we'll have some new faces, or somebody doing a different job or something, but I just look forward to it. It'd be great things, as Councilman McQueen said, it's moving forward, and I look forward to it, it's what we've been, the day we've been waiting on, and so I'm excited. And one last thing, I know there have been a lot of phone calls concerning, and this is more or less to people watching, there have been a lot of phone calls to City Hall concerning the Seaboard Festival. City Hall, the staff here does nothing with Seaboard Festival, it has its own committee. So, I've got some phone numbers here, that if people would please try to call these numbers, rather than calling City Hall, because it does kind of swamp our lines down with calls. One phone number I have here is nine-one-zero-five-five-seven-five-five-seven-zero, again, that's and that's for the Seaboard Festival Committee, which is coming up, by the way, so we look forward to that, too. And if you like me, or if you dislike me, it's an advantage either way, I've been asked by communities and schools to participate in a two-hour sitting, where I will either be dunked if it's hot, or pies in my face if it's cold. So, you want to come down there and help them raise money, I'm sure a lot of people would want to do it. Yep. So, again, liked or disliked, it's for a good cause, I don't care how hard you do it, or whatever, just come out and support them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. The...
No, you can't do it.
No, they've already had.
The, okay, here we go. We are well aware that we're having audio problems for the people who watch out there on TV. We know we've got the problems, and Mr. Garner is working on some quotes now to try to get this situation changed, and we're just going to have to look at the money issue of it, but we do wish to get this done, and we do want to do it, because we want everybody to have the ability to see us on TV, even with my mistakes. But Mr. Garner is working on that. I want to say a special thanks to everybody that works for the city that makes things happen. We have, we just recently got through with the County Fair down there, it's turned out to be the best fair as far as the number of people and the weather that we've had in probably the last eight to ten years. And this doesn't happen without the help of the city, so the city is making something happen that's good for the City of Hamlet. Additionally, the same thing with the Seaboard Fest, they put in untold hours to work down to make sure everything's ready for that Seaboard Festival, excuse me, which is really a boon to Hamlet, and these people that do that work extremely hard on it. The Seaboard Festival, of course, is coming up the last Saturday in October, and which is just several weeks away now, and so wish everybody to come out for that. The same morning, the Masonic Lodge up here will be having an excellent ham breakfast, so you might wish to attend that, I know I'd like to go to that. Additionally, again, if I tried to single out certain people within city government that do things, you just do your stuff every day, you don't ask questions, and you do it. We have to thank Tammy, Tammy has really just pulled her hair out, she told me this morning, she's so far behind now, she doesn't know if she'll see daylight, but we're hopeful that she'll get caught up. Marcus, the only thing I can say is, we were just privileged to have someone like you to make your application to the city. Your qualifications, your contacts that you have across the state are just most impressive, and you went the extra mile to find out about this city and the budget and everything before you even came in to be interviewed, and that's a real plus to us, so we just can't tell you how much. And to Billy, I have one other thing, I have been getting a lot of complaints about the trash trucks around the schools during the morning school hours, you know, creating traffic hazards. The last one I got dealt with, trash trucks and the knuckle boom loader being out on Highway seven before there during school traffic in the morning, so if we can adjust those schedules, keep them away from those schools at time of the morning, it would be appreciated, and I've had, I guess, four or five different people ask me about it, and I said, "Well, I'll transfer, send that on." And I believe that you have a question for us regarding the website, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege in reviewing the website prior to employment with the city, I saw a very nice, well-put-together "Welcome to the City" from the former City Manager, and at this time, I'd like to extend you all the opportunity to switch that to be a "Welcome to the City" from the Mayor and the City Council. If you guys are, if you all are in agreement with that, we can draft up a, I can assist you in drafting up a comprehensive, just welcome from all of you, if you guys would like that.
And you'll still put one on there somewhere from yourself?
Yes, sir, under the Administration tab, you know, I would draft my own in the event that a citizen wanted to, you know, sort of, you know, look at City Hall versus, you know, our main page.
Thank you. Y'all good with that? Okay. Yeah, okay, so that'll take care of that. And again, I appreciate everything the city employees are doing. Jerry, you've just really been a hard worker on this, Scott, you and Tucker, just, we like the improvements you all were making in the Police Department over there, there's a lot of good things going on, and of course, Fire Chief, keep on keeping on over there, it's going good, and that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to close.
Second? Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.